Tonight's city council meeting will commence. And first order of business tonight is we have Luanne Duty here tonight representing the Emergency Assistance Ministry, and actually she is with the Casa Grande Assembly of God. So if you would come forward and lead us in an invocation, and then we'll stay standing for the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and thank you, council members. My name is Luanne Duty. I represent the Emergency Assistance Ministry and Casa Grande Assembly of God. The vision of the Emergency Assistance Ministry is an interfaith coalition of Casa Grande faith-based organizations, private social service agencies, and local government to coordinate and mobilize efforts to provide emergency food, shelter, and other services to the Casa Grande faith community. The Casa Grande Assembly of God believes in the importance of family and community, and the importance of connecting faith and life. We hold strong to our five purposes by demonstrating these in our everyday lives. One of those purposes is to serve by meeting our church's needs and the needs of our community. Will you bow your heads, please, as I give the invocation? Dear heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all who gather here this evening. Thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for your life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you, or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you've said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, and order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for Mayor McFarland, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest in issues of our time, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give an assurance of what would please you, and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Casa Grande. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Luanne. Thank you, Mr. Powell. Okay, roll call this evening. We have two absent council members. I know one of them is sick, and another one's traveling, so can I get an excuse?
I move to excuse vote.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to excuse Mary Ann Matt from this evening's meeting. All those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, please let the roll call show. They're both excused.
Mayor McFarland, I'd like to move approval of the city council regular meeting minutes from May 21st, and except for the record, the historical preservation commission meeting minutes from April 23rd as they're presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the minutes have been approved. Claims against the city?
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of claims against the city for May 2nd through May 15th as presented.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the claims are approved. Next is the meeting agenda approval for tonight. Larry, any changes from council?
We have none, sir.
Anyone in council up here?
Yep.
Okay, seeing no changes, I have no changes, so I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. No special presentations tonight?
No.
All right, the consent agenda items, all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything?
I'd like to remove G3.
Okay, Mr. Powell would like to remove G3. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one, other, no other changes, can I get a motion to?
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilor Rick Ross.
Yes.
Councilor Vicki.
Yes.
Councilor Wada.
Yes.
Councilor Powell.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so then the next item is G3. Mr. Powell?
Brad or Larry, if you can help me on this, there's two deals on here. One is for the location that he has his restaurant in, and this is Evans, and then also one to move one of the licenses out to the rodeo grounds, but that has, there's not a lease in place on that yet, so we were asking that it not be voted on, on the part transferring to the rodeo grounds.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Powell, this particular license is not the one that he is proposing to move to the rodeo grounds. This is, this is a different license. We've had discussions with Mr. Cornejo about that particular item, right Gloria?
That is correct.
Okay.
He's currently working on it, and once we get his issue resolved, we will be posting it or bringing it to the city council.
Okay, so this, this doesn't affect?
It does not.
Okay, thank you. I would move approval if, but I don't have the number.
It's G3.
It's just G3.
Yeah.
Do I need a?
It doesn't, it doesn't have a resolution or anything, so.
I'm wondering.
Do we need a second, though?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, before you vote on that, can we look at one thing here very quickly?
Sure, yeah. Be my guest.
It's got both addresses on the, on the one part.
Is this the rodeo grounds?
Yeah.
The 665? Okay. That's why I was confused when I read it, because I thought it didn't have.
But I didn't think it meant the rodeo ground. I didn't think it would. That's not how I took it, but maybe I was wrong.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what you're going to find is that actually both applications that Mr. Cornejo had filed were included in your packet. We are not asking council to consider the one for the move to the, to the rodeo grounds. That is something that we, we've had some discussions with Mr. Cornejo. So disregard the second application that's attached in your, in your, right, it's the first that you're taking action on tonight.
So I would move for approval of the first application as presented.
Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please? Oh, just a, okay. Then all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, G3 is approved. Okay, next section is H, and that is a public comment, so I'll open the floor to anyone in the audience who would like to address the council. Just remember that to try and keep your comments to three minutes, and please state your name and your address when you come to the podium. And also know that we will not be able to engage in any discussion as it's not an agenda item, but we will take anything that anyone says, and we will have staff look into it if there's something that needs to be followed up on. Ms. Shed?
My name is Tiffany Shed, and I went to high school here. I live out in Eloyan Farm, and I just wanted to stop by because I'm running for Congress in this district, and I also wanted to say, I just kind of forgot after sitting here, how lucky we really are to have all of you on the council. Whether we agree all the time or not, every single face I see up here has been invested in this community, is accessible to the community, and really has a heart and a love for the people in this town, and so does most of your staff that I see sitting here as well. And so, in that tradition, I hope that when I'm the next Congresswoman, I can fill those shoes as well, and just didn't want to neglect my own backyard by not showing up to a Casa Grande City Council member. So hopefully I'll earn your vote, and you've already earned my great respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. And good luck. Anyone else like to address the council? Please. Remember, state your name and, and your address, please.
All right, my name is Ruben Arregui, and when you mean by address, I'm sorry, but do you mean like my home address, or just what I'm trying to address?
Well, your address here is fine.
Okay. All right, 420 West Wall Street, is that, all right, thank you. First time here, you know.
It's okay.
All right, so I'm here to tell you guys a letter that my friend wrote, Alex Johnstone. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here because he was on this leadership camp, but. Please just give me a minute. Okay. "To whom it may concern. Hello, and thank you for allowing me to, allowing me the time to speak with you all. My name is Alex Johnstone, and I am an active member of the Casa Grande Youth Commission, as well as the Casa Grande Decca. I also thank Ruben Arregui for speaking on my behalf. I am unable to attend today due to my participation in the leadership camp. Last Saturday, I was informed by a representative, Isela Black, that my friend Hector Castellanos had been working closely with her. She also informed me that the city was attempting to send him to jail, and asked me, and along with other citizens of Casa Grande, to advocate on Hector's behalf. Hector has been a longtime friend of mine. I played soccer with him for two years, and came to know him very closely. He is an artist, artist who, whose art I have hanging in my room. He is a poet who has spoken to college students across the country. Hector has an extremely traumatic life, being displaced by Hurricane Katrina, and most recently getting in a serious, recently getting seriously injured in a car accident. This is why I'm advocating for him today. I do believe anyone who commits a crime like this should face consequences, yes, but I do believe that these consequences for Hector's accused crime should be jail time, no. His consequences for these accusations should be something that helps the community. He's supposedly harmed. Throwing him in jail would do nothing for the community. I, Alex Johnstone, suggest that the term of community service, where his artistic talents can be utilized, would most benefit our community. Thank you for your time."
Okay, very good, thank you. And thank Alex for his comments. If you could forward that, that letter to, to Mr. Rains or to our city clerk, and we'll make sure that it gets to the proper place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else? Couldn't resist, could you?
I almost didn't, because I know Mr. Tice is so excited to have five agenda items tonight. John of our 941 East Penny Lane, just very quickly, because I do know we have a long agenda. First of all, I want to congratulate all of those who have submitted and required signatures to be on the ballot for our election in August, including the members in the audience that are here tonight. I wish you all the best of luck, and I congratulate Mayor McFarland on another term, I guess. It's not quite official yet, but should be pretty easy swimming, I would think.
It'll be tough.
Yeah. But the other thing I wanted to comment tonight is, I really appreciate Mr. Rains' presentation tonight on the strategic plan, and as you know, one of my big focuses has been of late, some aesthetic improvements and some image enhancement in the city, and I'm, I'm glad that we have put a focus on that in, in this plan, and actually put some dollar amount numbers associated with it. I, I think that'll be really helpful to our overall economic development, and I appreciate the staff and council's focus on those things, and I doubt I had anything to do with it, but I'm glad to hear it tonight anyway, so thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Public comment.
Public comment, yes, sir.
Good evening.
If you please state your name and your address, please.
Members?
Pardon me, could you please state?
I called Century Link.
Excuse me, could you please state your name and your address for the record, please?
My name?
Yes, sir.
George Manyello, two N's and two L's. I called Century Link.
And your address, please, sir?
1287 West Castle Drive.
Thank you.
I called Century Link and found out that my emails were delivered to the school board, and to the, the council members, the department of the fire department, the chief, and the chief of police. I am not a fanatic, and I'm not a protester. I lived in Key Largo for 10 years, and we timed on our TV, there was a giant cloud swirling around with an eye. So we took our boats out of the water, boarded up our windows, and our businesses. We were prepared. Some schools are not prepared. Santa Fe, it's not even been a month yet, a young man walked into the entrance of the school in a trench coat in the summer, and had his father's shotgun underneath the coat. If a security guard was there, naturally he'd say, "Open up your jacket." Would have saved 10 lives. There's an epidemic out there. I don't know if we're ignoring it, or if we're afraid of it. We have to protect our children. We have 3,665 children, and they just received a D on their Arizona merit score. But that's not important. Who really got the D is our school board, because they're responsible for their education. They're not prepared for the workforce, they're not prepared for college, they're idle. The school board is in gridlock, so when I hear it's not the council to make this decision, it's the school district. That is not excuse. The Justice Department, after the Santa Fe massacre, announced metal detectors are $5,000 on average. You get where I'm going? I think so. I have some, we know the airport, the people, the TSA, they confiscated 3,900 firearms in carry-on luggage. 3,300 were loaded in the year of 2017, metal detectors. We have the, we are the number one state in the country with the weakest gun laws. There are few restrictions on gun ownership and sales. You don't need a permit to purchase a handgun or rifle, either concealed or openly. These are the responses from the mayors and the governors after the shootings. The Virginia Tech, 33 killed. Governor Tim Klein directed colleges, universities, mental health providers, law enforcement, and other public officials in Virginia S.W.A. 70 preventative recommendations. Sandy Hook.
Excuse me, you need to wrap up because you're at five minutes, and you have, we have a five-minute.
Is that what you get?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I put all these for you members to look at, and I believe if there's the right changles, channels, or whatever, that we should form a forum to bring in the security manufacturer to look at our two schools, and tell us where we're vulnerable. These are our kids. There's nothing more important.
Thank you. Do you want to leave a copy of that with the clerk over here, and then she'll distribute them for you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public comments and move to item I, one, considering an ordinance accepting a bid for emergency vehicle group incorporated. Chief? Or someone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be covering the item to see if, there was unexpected absences tonight on the chief, so I'm, so I'm covering it. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are asking that the mayor and council approve the purchase of a 2018 F-450 road rescue type 1 Ultra Medic ambulance in the amount of
$249,500, which includes costs for the HGAC contract that we're proposing the purchase
to be made under, as well as the potential of receiving some savings if we prepay the, for the, for the, for the ambulance unit, for the rescue unit itself. The purchase is made possible through the city's capital replacement program. This is a vehicle that we've been setting aside funding for, for some time now. The unit that is currently in place is Unit 407. It's a 2003 Ford E-450 rescue unit, so it's approximately 25 years old. It has essentially met its useful life from a standpoint of replacement. While it does not have many miles on the current unit, essentially, we're finding that because of the age that we're in need of replacement, and with that, Mr. Mayor and council, I'd certainly entertain any questions that you may have.
Is the replaced one there at Station 4?
Yes, yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just a clarification on the, the one that we're going to be replacing, and they mentioned that it might be used for the low acuity program. Is that written into the budget to, to take care of the maintenance on that already?
We have, in fact, are still evaluating that at this particular time, but if in fact we do retain the vehicle, then ultimately it will be part of the CON application process that we'll be coming to council with proposal for. But we, we've not fully evaluated whether or not we'll retain or simply release this vehicle and buy, and be asking council for a new one if and when we evaluate that program.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Powell? Would this help, Larry, in, in response, if you had this vehicle going out instead of a whole fire crew on these things, would that would help the manning manpower available?
The.
Would not have to come out on a fire truck?
The, the alternative response vehicle that the Chief Miller and Chief Keane have talked about does exactly that. This is actually the unit that they use when they, when they do deploy type B or BLS calls, and so, yes, because it essentially becomes a two-person unit responding to a low acuity call.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, then I'll consider an ordinance, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number 3081, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Emergency Vehicle Group, Inc., for the purchase of a medic ambulance -- Vehicle Group, Inc., for the purchase of a medic ambulance, authorizing expenditure of public funds in amount not to exceed two-hundred-forty-thousand-six-hundred-thirty-one dollars forty-nine cents, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Emergency Vehicle Group, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3081 as presented.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay. Nothing for boards and commissions tonight, so we'll move to item K. So K-1 is considering resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the State of Arizona and the Department of Transportation. Kevin, is this yours?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Arizona, allowing them to acquire federal funds in the amount of one million three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars to construct a project on the Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway. These federal funds were converted to HERF funds through the state's HERF exchange program. This is a program that has not been available for many years and has just been brought back for us to take advantage. And this program allows MPOs, the Metropolitan Planning Organizations, to exchange federal aid with ADOT and receive ninety percent of the amount exchanged in state highway funds to program on... Excuse me, to program on projects. This is obviously desirable, because if we use federal funds, we have to follow all the federal rules, and projects become much more expensive, in the tune of anywhere from twenty to fifty percent more expensive. So this allows us to manage the projects locally and save those additional funds. If approved, this project is planned... As planned, will include the design and construction of a left-turn lane at Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway, where it intersects with Velvista Boulevard, along with a pavement preservation project from North Bianca Road to Russell Road. And there are no matching funds from the city involved with this project. And the project will be to extend the pavement life in that pavement section. It is at the end of its useful life, so this will be a temporary fix until we can find funds to fully reconstruct that section. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, is that section ultimately part of the RTA?
Ultimately, if we move forward with the Velvista corridor, that would be part of the RTA. This specific project is not.
Oh, I know it's... But it's a preservation project. Okay.
Would that... Would the left lane be for traffic going east? And there'd be a turn lane where they could get into, instead of stopping and get run into, and...
That's correct. We've had a high number of rear-end collisions there, people passing through the intersection when people are cacking up to make a left turn. It'll definitely make this area much safer.
Okay. Good.
And that was my question, is why was this project chosen? Besides it being desirable for the restrictions and everything, but is that why this particular project or area was chosen for this?
I may want to ask Duane Attell, our transportation engineer, he's more intimately involved with this, on the process that the MPO went through to identify this as a priority project. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No problem. That's why I came. Mayor, council members, what exactly is the question?
Why was this project chosen for these funds?
For the HERF exchange?
Mm-hmm.
We're the second city to actually do the HERF exchange, and the main reason is we got federal funds for a safety project for the left-turn lane. So that was the main reason. That was the majority of the cost for that left-turn lane, and we're actually milling or actually reconstructing quite a bit of the roadway right in that area, about five-hundred feet or so. So we just added the pavement preservation along with it, because that really needs to be done, too. That's one of our main roads in town that needs some work done on us.
Right. Okay.
That's how we got to where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Duane. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Gloria, can I get a resolution number, please?
Resolution number 5100. A resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the State of Arizona by and through its Department of Transportation and the City of Casa Grande for the purpose of design and construction of improvements to the Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5100, and it's one of those you couldn't say no to. It's not costing us any money. And so, and it is a safety project, and it's going to be two roads, one going on the old Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway, and then one that goes through Velvista. But so anyway, that's... Move for approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, the next section is Section L, and these are public hearings. So we'll consider the first one, number L-1, and what we'll do is we'll have the presentation and then open up the floor for public comment. Okay. Mr. Tice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The matter before you this evening with this item is a proposed zone change from the current zoning of Urban Ranch to proposed zoning of R-3, which is a multifamily zone.
Hey, Paul, is it... Are these two related?
They are somewhat, Mayor. They're the same property owner, and they're immediately adjacent. But the issues are a little different between the zone changes.
Okay. Go ahead, then.
So the subject property is fourteen point one-two acres. You can see its location on the south side of McCartney Road, just to the west of the interstate.
Is this the land that's adjacent to it? Is that state trust land?
It is. The land to the east is state trust land. Yes, sir. So the proposed change would be to R-3. As I mentioned, R-3 is a multifamily zone district, allows for high-density housing and multiple-family structures. R-3 zone designed to allow economic use of land while creating attractive, functional, and safe residential environment. I might say that the R-3 zone will allow for multiple type of residential structures. They could be four-plexes, they could be apartments, they could be townhomes, they could be condominiums, and they could be for rent or for sale, for owner occupied or renter occupied. One of the things we look at initially for any zone change is how that zone change relates to our general plan and what the general plan is calling for, for future land uses. In this case, the general plan for this area is commerce and business, as you might think, around the interchange as well. So however, in the commerce and business area, in addition to commercial developments, the general plan also allows for multifamily residential to create mixed-use districts with the commercial and some residential in terms of multifamily. The current zoning of Urban Ranch, low-density residential lots on one point two-five acres minimum, does not comply with the general plan. So we just talked about some of the permitted uses in the R-3, as well as some of the potential conditional uses. I also want to say that there is no plan at this time proposed for this property. The property owner has not given us any kind of specific plan. My understanding is the rezoning is for purposes of making the property more marketable. And once the next step is if the zoning were to be approved and someone were to buy it to propose a multifamily project, they would have to go through a public process with the planning commission, including public notice, to get that approved as well.
The actual plans, right?
The actual plan, that's right. We have some specific development standards that are on the screen. They will all be assessed and evaluated at the time of major site plan submittal. One of the things that... What we just saw is sort of the setbacks that would be imposed on this property. So we talked about conformance with the general plan in terms of the R-3 zoning and the multifamily land use. And the other criteria is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. It was interesting that the applicant's representative, Jackie Guthrie from EPS, made the case during the planning commission public hearing of the very low vacancy rate for existing multifamily developments, and made the case that we really do need some additional opportunities for multifamily to be constructed within the community to meet that need. There are some restrictions on when multifamily can be placed in our commerce and business land use district of our general plan. The one limit that's in the gray box says that it's only allowed in our commerce and business category that is over sixty acres. This particular commerce and business area is very large, it's twenty-five-hundred acres. And only a limited amount of the land in the commerce and business can actually be allocated to multifamily. It's no more than thirty percent of the area, and of course, in this case, it's less, just a little over half a percent. So it meets both of those restrictions very easily. Another thing we do look at when we're evaluating zone changes is our access to the property and how it might relate to our small area transportation plans and our regional trail plan. And so you can see here, we've already approved a PAD, residential PAD, sort of to the south and west of this project called Marabella. It's on the site, and you can see that in Marabella, the Henness Road or Pelomino Parkway, they're sort of one and the same, makes its way south across McCartney and through the Marabella project, and you see where it exits. And it will eventually probably line up with the Henness Road alignment, but Henness Road will no longer be able to go straight up to McCartney Road, because it would intersect with McCartney too close to the interchange, which is why we're sort of shifting the Henness Road to the west through there. The... But we needed to find some potential access for this site, as well as being on McCartney, and we think that Tucker Road will eventually come south across McCartney and cut across and connect over to somehow to the Henness Road alignment, too. So we think there'd be adequate access, not only for this development, but for those developments that lie between this one and Marabella. There is a condition of record on the zoning that requires this applicant to dedicate the right-of-way that's needed for McCartney Road, which is seventy feet from the center line prior to or at time of development. So there is a right-of-way dedication for McCartney that would occur. We've also identified that our regional trails map has identified a McCartney Trail, a regional community trail that follows essentially the McCartney Road corridor through here, and that trail would also have to be accommodated with the multifamily development if this zone change were to occur. In terms of location, staff feels this is a really good location for multifamily, given its close proximity and easy access to the interstate, and to allow for folks who might either be commuting to the valley or attending Arizona College. The... We were sensitive to the fact that this multifamily would abut the Marabella on the south and potentially residential to the west when that property was rezoned. So there are some conditions of record here that really speak to trying to ensure compatibility of the... Any multifamily that's built here in terms of when it's adjacent to residential, including height limits when adjacent to the residential, additional landscaping, additional setbacks, and screening requirements. I did mention that if this zone change were to be approved by city council, the next step in the process would mean major site plan review at planning commission, at which time we would look at and evaluate all aspects of the proposed development as listed on the screen. The... We did do public notice, our standard public notice. The only inquiry we received was from the property owner to the west, who owns Harbor... That's Harbor Ridge Apartments. His property is Zoned Urban Ranch, and he was just inquiring about how that might impact his property. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on this and recommended that city council approve the rezoning to R-3 with the conditions that are on the screen and in the RCA that we provided to you. With that, I'd be happy to answer all... That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Paul. All right. So before we have council comments, we want to throw it open to the public. So we'll open the public hearing on this project. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item L-1? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing. And anyone in the council have some questions for Mr. Tice on this project?
I just... I think it's very well done, especially with the setbacks, so they're not interrupting the lifestyle of the people that are getting close to there, so...
That's close to the interstate.
Yeah.
And that was mine. I was... When I saw this, I was really happy to see that we're planning. It was very well thought out, and I really do hope that this does become marketable and there is someone that will move forward. There's definitely a huge need for something like this, you know, it's close to the interstate, Central Arizona College. It's just a great location, so I'm just so happy that you've been working with them and the property owners and Jackie for... You know, I mean, she knows us well enough to know the questions we're going to ask, and so we appreciate all that with the setbacks and considering all the properties around there. So yeah, I just was real pleased to see this come forward.
Still has to go through a PAD.
Right.
Paul, that's the only question I got.
I know.
Yes. That was it.
Oh, that was it?
He didn't have one.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, I just wanted to mention that, you know, in reading all this information on this, I was really impressed with the fact that all of my questions got answered by the Planning and Zoning Commission and what they were asking. So that, you know, made it a lot easier for me, so I appreciate the work.
Okay. All right, and seeing no other comments or questions, then I'll entertain an ordinance for item L-1, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.392. An ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Urban Ranch to multifamily residential on property located at the southwest corner of McCartney Road and Interstate 10, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.392, because I think it's bad, and I also want to shock our planning council director, so...
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just real quickly, I'm remiss for not doing it before item I-1, but every time you're missing at least two people, I always remind the council that all ordinances always require four votes of the council, no matter how many people are here. Should've done it before I-1, but I wasn't paying attention, I guess.
Okay. Well, we have a resolution, we have a proposed approval and a second. So can I get a reading or a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, item L-2. Similar area.
Excuse me, Mayor. This next item is another zone change. It's a companion item to the one you just heard. The zone change is from Urban Ranch to B-2. It's the same property owner. And it's a small two-point... And it's a small 2.65 acre site that just sort of nestled into the northwest corner of the site you just considered. And their request here is for B2, which is like a neighborhood commercial zoning. So there's a description of our B2 zone district. As I mentioned, it's essentially a neighborhood commercial zone, allows a variety of different types of uses that would service a neighborhood. Could be convenience stores, gas stations, restaurants, offices, your typical retail and service uses. In terms of compliance with the general plan, this site also is located within our commerce and business land use category. And so it is a zone district that is compatible and compliant with our general plan. Here we are, our standard development standards associated with our B2 zone district. The, again, I guess the most important zone development standard here is in yellow. And there's an increased setback as well for commercial buildings adjacent to residential because this commercial site will have a residential on at least three sides, the east, south, and west. So there are increased setbacks for buildings from adjacent residential zone districts. The general plan also suggests that B2 zones should be served by arterial roadways. And obviously, this one is with McCartney Road and very close proximity to the interstate. Same roadway network issues are here that we talked about with the last zone change. We are also requiring a dedication of right of way to McCartney Road of 70 foot from the center line at time of development and dedication of a trail easement and incorporation of the trail for the McCartney Trail at time of development. The planning commission held a public hearing on this. And as part of the result of the public hearing and staff work, we are recommending approval of the zone change with the conditions that you see on the, on the screen and also in your RCA. Again, this development also will have to undergo major site plan review at time of actual development. There are no specific plans for the property at this time. Standard notification process, the same property owner discussed this site as well. And the planning commission recommends that city council approve the zone change from urban ranch to B2.
Okay. Then I'll open this item number L2 for a public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and I'll call for an ordinance, please, Gloria. Oh, do you have any discussion with the council? Sorry. Cut you guys off.
Nope.
Okay. All right. Ordinance, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.393. An ordinance of the council of the city of Cas Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to general business on property located at the southwest corner of McCartney Road and Interstate 10, Cas Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.393 as presented.
Second. Right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Varela.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes, and I think they'll do very well at that location.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, moving to item L3. Again, another public hearing. It's approval of a major amendment to the station planned area development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the mayor stated, this is a PAD amendment. And, you know, I don't know if council is aware, but there are certain types of PAD amendments that can be approved by the planning commission and other types of PAD amendments that require council action as well. And this is one that falls into that latter category. And it falls into that category because there are additional land uses being added to this PAD that weren't allowed under the prior approval. So essentially, that's the nature of the amendment, which is to add additional land uses. And PAD amendments are, this type are essentially zone changes because it's just going to be a new PAD zone with a new list of permitted uses. So the Tanger Outlet PAD was established in 1991. And it was last, had a major amendment in 2012 when it was rebranded and refined as the station. And the station, actually, PAD amendment went to council and, and there were some different uses added at that time. So outdoor recreational uses, some revised architecture, and, you know, refinement of the PAD at that time. This, this application is to amend the station PAD to add some indoor-only light manufacturing as a permitted use, to refine some of the performance standards with the entertainment uses, to allow stealth-mounted freestanding wireless facilities in the structure as a permitted use, to modify the approved architectural theme, to refine and clarify certain performance standards associated with various permitted and conditional uses, and to rebrand it as City Gate. In reviewing PAD amendments, the city code sets forth a series of review criteria that staff and the planning commission and city council should consider. They're all listed here, but really, I'm only going to talk about briefly about the ones that are highlighted in green. But all those criteria were evaluated and you would have found that discussion in your staff report that we provided to planning commission. This site is also located within our commerce and business land use category of our, of our general plan. And you can see the little description on the right side of the screen. Employment Center is comprised of commerce and indoor light manufacturing and supportive services. Now, we don't often use our commerce and business category to locate light manufacturing. Mostly, it's commercial and services. But it is an allowable use to have light manufacturing as long as everything's inside. And it's more like fabrication and assembly versus manufacturing, actually. So you see here, again, a little excerpt from the general plan where it talks about the appropriate land uses, our enclosed light manufacturing. PAD is an appropriate zoning as well. So again, the, on the left, those are the primary changes to the PAD that you can see. And in terms of the wireless facilities, you can see that sort of fall bell tower, architectural tower on this building, actually is a great opportunity to put stealth wireless facilities inside that. And you would never know they're there. This PAD actually allows them to rise, raise the height of that a few feet if they needed to, to help with the marketing and functionality of that. But it's a great opportunity, I think, to put some wireless facilities on the site. There you go. There's the, the standards, it's 35-foot max site for the buildings with allowances up to 80 feet for the architectural features. The max site currently is 65. So we're allowing another 15-foot of height on those architectural features that might be used for wireless facilities or signage in general. In terms of access, it would continue to have its access to Jimmy Kerr as it does now with really just one major access point. But we're planning for future access along those frontage roads that will eventually be built connecting Jimmy Kerr to Selma and, actually, is it Early at the top? Yeah, to Early Selma, thank you, to Selma, as well as an east-west connection that would be able to go back to a road network that is designed to come off Jimmy Kerr just to the east of Mitchell. So there would be additional access provided in the future, both to Selma and to the west to allow, to allow future, future interconnection with surrounding developments. The PAD amendment went through the standard notification process and we received no comments from the public. Planning commission held a public hearing on this rezone and recommend to council that you approve the PAD amendment with no conditions. That concludes my presentation.
Paul, could you go back to the frontage road piece where it shows the frontage roads? Back a couple slides, I think.
I'll try here. My clicker isn't working for some reason. Can you manually go that, make that go backwards for me?
Yeah, try it.
All right. There we go.
Right there. These, this is showing a frontage road?
Yes. That, that, the arrow going north-south is actually supposed to be illustrating a frontage road that is planned for that area. There's a frontage road that's designed on this side of the interstate, at least to provide, you know, excuse me, it doesn't provide access to Selma. It provides access to that property just to the north of this property. That's between this property and Selma along the west side of the interstate.
Well, this is also that section that they're, that they're widening right now.
Okay, they're widening it within their existing right of way.
Right.
But there's a plan to have a parallel frontage road to provide access to that property that's just to the north of this property.
Okay.
But that would not connect with.
Enough land there?
Pardon?
Is there enough land there to do that?
Essentially, yes. Yes, there is. I've seen the design, it fits in there.
Okay.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question. So I understand the wireless tower, the light manufacturing, because they're more assembling products, but entertainment, like, do they have an idea of what, what might come in there? Any discussion on that?
There, no, no specific ideas. But the last PAD amendment actually expanded, the one that was done in 2012, actually introduced that use for indoor and some limited outdoor entertainment. So that was already allowed, but that was refined a little bit with this PAD in terms of its standards. But it might be things like, you could do bowling alley, laser tag, other types of indoor entertainment or recreation that you might.
This said outdoor, too, didn't it?
There is indoor and outdoor, but the outdoors very limited for like special events.
Oh, okay.
Where they might have, you know, they might have a small, a small outdoor music venue for a short period of time for contemporary use, not a permanent kind of use.
Like the chamber does their.
The car show and stuff.
Their show there and they have a band outside.
Those kinds of events, yes.
Okay.
And the applicant is in the audience, and so they might be able to answer further what their plans would be for that, if you wanted to hear from them.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. Glad to be back tonight. My name is Jason Coopow, 14500 North, Northside in Scottsdale Suite 116. I'm general counsel for the developer. I'd just like to start by thanking city staff for all of their help in getting us to this stage. But, but you summarized it pretty well, Mr. Tice, on what we had in mind it would be. My understanding is like, like a farmer's market where you could have, you know, for that, a Saturday morning, you know, a guitar player or someone providing, you know, light music or something like that.
On a temporary basis, outside.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, temporary.
Do you have a question, Mr. Paul?
Yeah, on the recommendation, it was to approve the major amendment following the, with, with, subject to the following technical modifications.
They've all been addressed already. All the technical modifications have been addressed by the applicant.
Do these need to be included in a motion or not?
They do not.
They've addressed them.
They're not conditions of record. They were technical modifications. They had to be met, but they were satisfied between the planning commission hearing and today. So they've met all the technical modifications.
Okay, the, any manufacturing would be inside a building?
It would be inside the building, it's required, yes.
That's correct. And, and I like the word assembly. I think that's, that's a better word. So as I explained to the commission, I, my understanding is because of economies of scale, logistical purposes, you know, we, the vision is you have, you know, maybe a dresser in the legs would be assembled onsite, you know, light, light things like that. And, and obviously, we will continue to keep the city apprised of what the plans are as we continue to finalize those moving forward.
Okay. That's, that's, okay. Ralph?
Because I know that property's been there and there's tried a lot of efforts at development. Do you have a timeline or how you envision this growing?
So I can tell you, I can share with you, councilman, we already have certain agreements with third parties to begin that process or to, we essentially started the process. My understanding is by the end of the year, we would be sort of, you know, fully, I guess, moving towards full capacity there as close to, as what we have right now under agreement, moving forward with those agreements.
So is there also a plan to kind of clean it up and?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Brews it up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Contemporary is to this is a, a part of this is a comprehensive sign plan that, my understanding, has essentially been approved by the commission. We've had some technical changes that we've made, but that lays out the aesthetic signage and, and certainly, our goal as a company is to make it aesthetically pleasing for both the city and obviously end users and retailers and potential tenants.
So we could talk about putting electronic, like a TV screen?
That's, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. There's.
And you'll give us some free, some city advertising?
Um, I.
I'm just looking out for the city.
He's looking after his campaign, so.
Of course.
I'm sorry, I was just teasing you.
So we expect to see that by the end of the year also?
That's, that's my understanding. And we certainly hope to, yeah, have that, for sure. It's a, it's a part of the general scheme.
Okay.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Is the association of this property still with Phoenix Smart in any way or?
AZ Sourcing is the developer.
AZ Sourcing is the developer and the owner.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do need to open up for, because it is a public hearing, so I'll open the item L3 for anyone in the audience who would like to address this particular project. All right. Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing and I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.42.2. An ordinance of the council of the city of Cas Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to the station planned area development adopted for property generally located at 2300 East Tanger Drive, Cas Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 1178.42.2 as presented.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Varela.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we'll move to item L4, another public hearing. This is on our CDBG entitlement grants, better known as community development block grants. And I believe this is over to you, Ralph.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you our proposed 2018 annual. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you our proposed twenty-eighteen annual action plan for the CDBG program. But before we go into the specific project proposed under this plan, this first, allow me to show you this first slide, which is the CDBG allocation history since becoming an entitlement community in July of twenty-fifteen. Three years ago, the city received its first entitlement allocation of three-hundred-fifty-four-thousand-six-hundred-eighty-two. Then in two thousand sixteen, the CDBG allocation was close to three-hundred-nineteen-thousand dollars. Last year's allocation was a little over three-hundred-forty-eight-thousand dollars. As we move into our twenty-eighteen annual action plan or fiscal year nineteen, which will start July first of this year and ends June thirty of next year, the allocation has increased to almost three-hundred-sixty-five-thousand dollars, the highest since we became an entitlement community. So I just want to show the funding difference between the entitlement and non-entitlement allocations, and it is obvious that the city made a logical decision to switch to entitlement status, and that decision equates to almost a million dollar difference in funding. To be exact, it's nine-hundred-thirty-four-thousand-four-hundred-thirty-four dollars. So with those allocations over the years, I'm going to present to you just briefly what we have accomplished just so far. We have completed fifteen owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, and there's still four units that are under construction, hopefully to be finished by the end of this month, if not early next month. We have, our target for that within the five-year plan is twenty-five units, so I think we are doing well. The next item is that we, since last year, we have assisted twenty-two homeless persons with rapid rehousing under the CARA program, Casa Grande Homeless Program. Our target is ten people. We also have completed the west street, first street sidewalk improvement project, and then we have provided advocacy services to fifty-six victims of abuse and domestic violence. Our target was fifty, fifty individuals. Over the west side neighborhood, we have provided senior services to thirty-nine seniors, and our target was twenty-five. And our city police department have installed thirteen messaging signs on the west side neighborhood and engaged over twelve-hundred youth and hundred-and-fifty adults to establish rapport and awareness on crime prevention. And last year, just our staff under the community development division, we have assisted over three, two-hundred-seventy external customers with information related to our programs and referrals to other services outside the city. So going to the twenty-eighteen annual action plan, we have nine projects or activities proposed under that plan. The detail for each project was illustrated in, in the report provided to the council about a month ago, I believe. The first four projects are under the public service program. So you can see fifteen thousand was requested by CARA for the Casa Grande homeless services. That's the same program that we approved last year, so they're continuing on that program. And then fifteen thousand nine-hundred-five was requested by Seeds of Hope for the continuation of the senior connections, senior services, again, on the west side neighborhood against abuse, requested fifteen thousand to pay for advocates on their advocacy services for the victims of abuse and homeless women and children. And our police department is going to extend the crime prevention, education and outreach to the south side neighborhood just south of the railroad tracks for five thousand dollars. Items five, six and seven are under our community development program, which are the activities under public, public facilities and infrastructure. So forty thousand was requested by the Arizona Foundation for the Handicap to repair and improve their ADA accessibility within their two facilities located along Main Street and First Street, just to enhance their, their ADA doors to an electric push, uh, pu, um, push opener pads. And they wanted also to extend their restroom, add two more stalls and sink, as well as ramp with a handrail. So all that activ, that work will be about forty thousand. And item number six is for one Ramada shade to be located in our community recreation center along Pier Road, and that's for thirty thousand dollars. And Public Works requested over hundred-twenty thousand dollars to improve the streets and sidewalks south of the Union Pacific Rail, that little neighborhood with two parks in there, the Elliott Park and I can't remember the other park, but that would be the area there that would be enhanced. The community development division is requesting fifty thousand to fund our owner-occupied housing rehab, which will be used as a leverage with the Arizona Department of Housing Home Grant. We're planning on applying for two-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars home grant. And lastly, the seventy-two-thousand-nine-hundred-thirty-one planning and administration or capacity building, that's equivalent to twenty percent of the total three-hundred-sixty-four-thousand-six-fifty-seven dollars allocation for twenty-eighteen. That will fund the salary and benefits for, of one-point-five FTEs, full-time employees and other administrative costs to implement our CDBG program. We have conducted the thirty-day review process required by HUD for this annual plan. We started March thirty and then ended April thirtieth, and we did not receive any comments from the public. This concludes my presentation, and I am asking the mayor to open the public hearing at this time. This is a public hearing, allowing the public to provide their comments. Thank you.
Okay, so let's open the public hearing then. This is on item L four. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this item? It's our community development block grant entitlements. Okay, well, seeing none, then I will close the hearing, public hearing, and ask the council if you have any comments or any questions. Yes, sir.
Just a comment, I'm, I'm very impressed with the way the money was spread around our community in so many ways that it provided help where it was needed, and so I commend you on that.
Thank you.
Ralph?
Likewise, I think, you know, the targeted populations in terms of homeless and against abuse and so forth are very needed populations. On the fifty thousand for the housing rehab, that's combined with other housing rehab money that we have, right? So it's a, it's probably closer to half a million.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Councilman Varela.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, then I will call for a resolution. No, sorry. Yeah, it is a resolution, okay. Sorry, resolution, please.
Resolution number five-one-zero-one. A resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting the community development block grant entitlement twenty-eighteen annual action plan.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number five-one-zero-one as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, oops, sorry, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Varela?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, no executive session tonight, so we'll move right into item N reports. And we'll start down here with you, Donna.
Okay, just a couple quick things. I don't know that many people have heard about it, but congratulations to the Casa Grande Union High School Dance Company. They've been asked to perform in the Macy's Day Parade in November. And I also wanted to mention, while it's not a good thing, I noticed that we had three arrests regarding graffiti issue. The good part to that was that in the article, I believe it was Sergeant Inkstrom, had made a comment about our strategic plan and how we want to address blight, and that the quality of life goes along with that. So I was really encouraged by the fact that somebody that works the street from the police department is aware of our strategic plan, and I think that it doesn't do any good if it stays here with us, but if it goes out into our staff, I think that's really important. So I had that. And lastly, there was a focus group that was done in Casa Grande with the Governor's Office of Volunteer and Service Learning, and I understand that they did a number of them around the state. Ours was the, the largest that they have had so far, including the city of Phoenix. So that tells a lot about our, our community, so that's it.
Thank you, Donna. Mr. Powell?
I'm good tonight.
Lisa?
Not much. I just wanted, last week, we had the transit committee meeting, since Duane's here, Duane's back there, I just wanted to thank Duane for, for everything. You know, we're finishing up on the Transit Technical Advisory Committee met, and just, you know, there's been so much input from stakeholders and the community, so I just wanted to thank everyone for giving their input, attending, you know, the transit informational meetings and filling out surveys. You know, there, this plan has become nice and comprehensive, and it'll be coming to the council later, like, like the city manager said, later this summer, you know, September, October, so that, just want to thank everyone for that. As far as the strategic plan, once again, you know, John McGuire made a comment that, you know, he, he gives us ideas and he doesn't know if we listen or, but, and we do. You know, we listen to a lot of the community members, you know, so many of us are involved in so many different organizations, and we're out there talking to the communities. So when we put together a plan like this, we really do pay attention to, you know, what, what people are telling us. You know, I, I think there's a common theme in this plan. Customer service is huge, and so I think our staff realizes that, that across the board, that that's where we need to concentrate. You know, quality of life is, is, you know, again, a common theme, you know, with, with that civic pride and cleaning up our neighborhoods and paying attention to that, and, and making sure that we're taking care of our businesses, whether they're big or small. So I think that's, you know, the, that's kind of the common theme I felt throughout the whole plan, and, you know, I, I think it's, it's going to be great moving forward with that, so that, that's it for me.
Great, thank you, Lisa. Ralph?
Had the pleasure of attending the Pinot Partnership and hearing Governor Ducey talk, and especially in regards to the issue of opioids and the crisis and some of his proposals and the ten million dollars will be set aside for treatment and hopefully also moving toward setting aside funding for, on the prevention then, which is very needed. The second thing is the La Familia Initiative just had their class on the Hispanic Leadership Institute and spin over ten years, and wanted to recognize that Deputy Chief Frank Alanis and Officer Scott Peters were two of the graduates, so thank you for the city for your support, and I know they were, they enjoyed it a lot, and so thanks for the city for their continued support on that. And I thought, the last remark is that I think it's just great when a city can talk about quality of life and, and, and see it, how I see it happening in terms of the funding and programs that we have, and I, I think more cities need to do that.
Thank you, Ralph. I, first of all, I just want to thank the council and staff really for all the hard work on the strategic plan. I think it really was well-done, and I think it'll be a good document for us moving forward to help guide some of our capital improvement projects along with our, our budgets and our kind of daily activities in the city. I had the fortune to go attend the Memorial Day event last Monday, and it was, it's always moving event, and for all those who did show up and, and participated, thank you for their part. It was, it was a great event as usual. And then we also had the fire department volunteer lunch last week, so I want to thank all the fire department volunteers who showed up and, and who helped us, help us with the fire department. Ralph mentioned the governor was here. He was actually here in Casa Grande, so it was good to see him here. He listened to several of us about various things that are going on in our community, so he took a very keen interest and actually is going to follow up on a few of the topics that we talked about here over the next couple of weeks. And then today at an industry roundtable, had about twenty-three different industries represented, so, and I actually presented the, the city's strategic plan there this morning. Donna was there with me, so thank you, Donna, for attending, and it was kind of hosted by the C, City Chamber of Commerce, so it was a good event. It was at the hospital sponsored by, by Rana and the Banner Hospital, so it was a good, good, good event, good meeting. I also had a chance to meet with the new Casa Grande Union High School Superintendent. He was in town today. I'm, I'm intrigued by, by him. I think he'll do a good job. He sounds like he's got some really good experience in terms of actually operating an A-plus high school, so some good knowledge that I think will definitely benefit the city of Casa Grande and our high school district, so I'm looking forward to working with him along with our elementary school. BBS, Steve, Steve Beebe, B-E-B-E-E. So nice guy, he's moving down, he's going to actually move his family down here to Casa Grande. He lives up in, up in the valley, Cape Creek, yeah. So he is going to move here. He's already looking for a house, so. Have, attending a ADOT study session tomorrow to make sure that we get our last little shout in for the five-year plan, and the court's in interchange, so I'll be up, up at the ADOT headquarters again tomorrow with, with my friend Duane Itel over there. Will be commuting up to Phoenix to bang on the desk of ADOT to try and get us some money. And then we have our RTA Citizens Committee meeting this week. Mr. J, Mr. Jackson is our representative for the, for the city of Casa Grande, and so we'll be having that up in Florence. There's a bunch of stuff, career, the Casa Grande Elementary School Career Camp is this week, Tuesday through Wednesday. There's a wrap-up on, on Thursday, wrap-up event. We have the, we have the resource roundup here at the Holiday Inn. It's put on by the, by the Community Action Human Resources Agency, which is CARA, so anybody interested in that, it's, the, the theme is it takes a village to connect resources, so I think that should be a really good event. And I just want to give one last shout-out on the census that just came out, and I think the paper published it this weekend, but the latest census shows Casa Grande at fifty-five-thousand-four-hundred-seventy-seven res, full-time residents, and Maricopa distant forty-eight-thousand-zero-zero-seven. So, yeah, that's worth, that's worth a pause. And we outgained them, too. So that's my last shout-out, and that's my last poke at Maricopa tonight, so.
Life is good in Casa Grande.
So thank you, everybody, for attending. Meeting is adjourned.